We call this evening's meeting to order. This is the regular City Council meeting for Tuesday, October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Bemis.
Here.
Councilman Carter.
Here.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Here.
Mayor Gillis.
Here.
Councilwoman Harris.
Here.
Councilwoman Meldrum.
Here.
Councilman Starbuck.
Here.
Or President.
Can I have a woman standing in prayer? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
All move.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Before we begin public comment, I'm going to invite Ms. Jan Evans to the podium. I think she's here for a certain reason.
They laugh and smile. We've got happy people here. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, good evening. Thank you, uh, Mayor, City Council members, and City Manager for allowing us to speak this evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. You're broken.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Jan Evans. I live at eight-fourteenth Stage Street, Algenack, and I'm here tonight representing our local community, Piece-to-Piece Quilters. As you can see, we are well represented here tonight. It's amazing ladies. We are here tonight representing our sixty-five-plus growing membership, not just as a group that share a passion for sewing, quilting, and fiber arts, but as a group that serves. Each one, through their generosity and volunteer heart, dedicates their time and unwavering commitment to helping others. They don't wait to be asked. They show up and they serve. And in doing so, they inspire others to do the same. This in itself is a valuable asset to all of us. We are here to represent and acknowledge your hard work, bringing the Algenack Activity Center and the Algenack Pool to our local community. This kind of forward-thinking investment is what our community needs. We appreciate your courage in prioritizing the long-term needs and vision of our community. We acknowledge that these projects have been controversial to you all. You have not always been supported at times, and it has been a lonely position for you on a collective and on a personal basis. Even though your decisions have received some pushback, we believe these two projects are a positive, vital investment in our community's long-term health. Not only do these additions help our local community, it makes us more appealing to a wider range of future residents, businesses, and visitors. Our Piece-to-Piece Quilters have been meeting in the basement of the Algenack Church of Christ for twenty years. Even though it is a welcoming, caring, loving environment for us to teach, learn, and enjoy our skills, we have had challenges. Our growing membership needs more space, and there is difficulty managing the basement stairs. Many of us need the use of handicap-accessible facilities as we carry our sewing machines and our equipment. As a result of this, we have many who have not been able to come and take part in our activities. This has been difficult, as it's important for many of our members who have a need to stay engaged. In January of two thousand and twenty-five, we approached our city officials on the possibility of the Piece-to-Piece Quilters utilizing a space at the Algenack Activity Center as a full-time home. We needed a handicap-accessible safe home where our members can come together and come together for social connection, skill development, creative inspiration, and community service. A multi-generational place where there's a sense of belonging and support, a place to improve our mental health and reduce anxiety and stress, a place to learn from each other as we mentor and teach others and contribute to the wider community. That place where our quilters can preserve history and make a difference in our community and our world. That was our need, and that was our vision. Isn't that what a community activity center is all about for all generations? You saw that, and you shared our vision, so we thank you. We, you felt the former library would be a good fit, and you were right. However, you explained that that room was not in Phase One of the Activity Center, and such, there was no money to update for us. This did not deter us. Our Piece-to-Piece Quilters have always put God in the middle of all that we do, and we know that when you're doing His work, He provides, and He senses people. We were in awe as we watched Him open door after door for us. When the community heard our need, they came to the rescue. Along with so many supporting our fundraising efforts, the community responded. Custom floor covering installed the floor at a discount. The Algenack Lions and Imperial Painting donated the painting and the paint for the room. Electricians came to donate their time, and funds were donated for all the new LED lighting, and others donated to purchase our tables, our chairs, TV, and help with supplies, help pay our lease payment, our insurance premium, and so, so much more. God's grace and provision in action in our small community. We thank our Algenack City Council for not giving up and for understanding that strong communities don't just happen, they happen because of all of you. This evening on your agenda is the opportunity for you to do the final approval to get the Piece-to-Piece Quilters moved into the Algenack Activity Center. We are so excited and just can't wait for the opportunity to inspire others there. We have provided a remembrance for you. It's a stone, and we've given everyone a stone. It's a stone, and on that stone is the word "inspired." It takes just one person to cast a stone to create a ripple. You see, it all starts with one. One person to lend a hand to say, "I'm here for you," an act of humility and kindness that spreads. The supported become supporters, spreading possibilities to our neighbors and their neighbors, who then reach out to theirs until the entire community has been transformed. It takes just one person to cast a stone to create a ripple. Thank you for casting the stone for our Activity Center. Let us and our community now come together in a positive way to be that ripple. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
And thank you, Quilters, for being here. All right. Well, now we'll open up for a public comment. Anybody who'd like to speak before the council, you have five minutes to speak.
Thank you.
Are you in charge?
Well, Eileen Tesh, um, I just wanted to, uh, address, um, Item G of the agenda under New Business, to approve proposed recruitment and selection process, uh, for a new City Manager. Um, and you may remember, I was the mayor, um, when we hired Denise Kirstenberg. Um, so we put out a bid. I just hope that you go into more detail of what company you're going to hire, if you're putting out bids for different companies. Um, there's some that are very controversial, um, out there that I have been, uh, looking into. Uh, and I know that we used, uh, the one from Lansing, uh, the one that was, uh, part of the, uh, Council City Manager Association. Um, I wanted to address, uh, this past weekend, um, the, uh, large banner that was over St. Clair River Drive. Many people were asking me about it. I sent, uh, Mayor Rocky Gillis a text message. It said, "Wish Steve a Happy Birthday." And I said, "Who's Steve? And who gave permission to put this over St. Clair Drive?" And your response to me, uh, Mayor, was, uh, that it was part of the Red Barn event and that a permit and insurance was, uh, taken out. Um, I did FOIA that information because, as I indicated to you in my text message, I believe it sets a dangerous precedent for people out there, the next person that wants to put a banner up there, and who knows what it's going to say. There's a lot of, uh, you know, uh, organizations out there that would love to put a banner across the, uh, St. Clair River Drive. So I FOIAed the documents, um, was surprised that, uh, they sent me a bill for a dollar ninety. Seriously.
That's standard.
But I paid my money, and, uh, then I went into the Articles of Incorporation for the, uh, uh, for the organization, uh, for Mr. Starbuck, and still didn't find any Steve. So, um, I later learned that, uh, it was, um, your father's birthday. Uh, and then, but I did learn in the, uh, permit, um, about the cleanup, and, and those signs remained there for the next three, four, or five days. Um, so I just would, uh, ask the council to be concerned about, uh, what is happening. That was not in any of the documents that a banner, unless I missed it, um, that a banner was going to be put across St. Clair River Drive. And, uh, I saw another banner, somebody sent me a picture of a banner, um, that was very controversial, not nice, that Mr. Starbuck put out, um, back in July. I, I don't know what year. Calling somebody a bitch and a big banner. Okay, we gotta just be careful. Thank you.
How you guys doing? Pep Corning, Algenack, twenty-three years. Hi, guys, how you doing? Um, not here to praise Tiffany Ray, now I'm still upset about the water bills, to be honest with you. So, forget about that, but in, uh, light of what, uh, the former person just spoke of, she forgot to mention that she was successfully recalled as the mayor that hired Miss Denise. And another thing, Mr. Scott Starbuck does a lot for this community. He had a little personal interest, I'm guessing, in this banner. I'm not sure, you know, what it was, what it was about, but, um, again, I, with this asset, we consider the source. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dwayne Renick, two oh seven Roseland, Hubeck, Michigan. First, I want to be the first graduate Denise on retirement. Six years, turned into eight years, and it was a good eight years. And now we have to hire a new City Manager. And people have noticed, people who don't come here a lot, my friends, my relatives, I'm next swinging up. It's on the upswing right now. Partly City Council, partly City Management, partly it's Joe Down, Joe Veneer, it's the whole community. So this next vote, when you guys vote, it's gonna probably be part of your legacy. People are remember who voted for the new supervisor or City Manager. Um, I'd like to give you a little pep talk. What, what the residents would like to see is see if you can, I, I, I don't know what Eileen was talking about, hiring outsourced to get people to apply, but whoever applies, um, the residents like to see someone local, someone who knows the area, someone who's actually served in some type of a management role before, um, someone who has local ties with local government, county government, state government, federal government, and local organizations, local government bodies, FEMA, or not FEMA, but, um, Eagle, whoever. Um, hopefully you get some superstar who can come and fill all the criteria, so they don't have to wait twelve months or eighteen months to get their, to get their, their bearings. They can hit the ground running and keep the momentum of that moving. We don't need to stop the momentum. Jake's ideas, Rocky's mics, everyone's ideas, they're building. So the last thing we want to do now is slow down the momentum. And if we could find someone who actually is a very good grant writer, I think we could probably improve a lot of, you know, a lot of things that we all talk about. We could approve with, with state money, county money, Dave Van den Bosch, you know, find someone who works good with him. Matt King is a good friend of mine. Matt King would love to work with someone who would work with him to better the whole community. So I hope a superstar applies and makes your vote easier, because I gotta imagine, next time you guys all come for election, there are certain people in the community who are going to remember who you voted for, and it's going to end up on social media. And if the person who gets elected turns into a fake township piasco, it's going to reflect on all of us. So make sure you vote for someone that you know is going to be good for the community and is going to be a good representative and experienced. That's all I ask for.
Thank you.
Dwayne, next thing, let's start them in. Anyone else?
I, I think there's at least one person who wants to come up and do comments on Pierogi Fest.
Hi.
You tell him.
Diane Shumaleski, six oh nine St. Clair River Drive. This Thursday at the VFW, we're having our annual Pierogi Fest. Even though ticket sales have been really sluggish, um, we are still selling limited amount of tickets at the door. I've received a few phone calls today asking if tickets are still available, and so I'm sending them to City Hall. Mike, did you get your tickets yet?
Yes.
As of this afternoon, you can't.
I was there.
So come, and Jake is going to help us serve, right? Come and, um, enjoy the Polish food and the dancers. It'll be a lot of fun, as usual. This Thursday, we start serving at six o'clock. The dancers will start at seven, right? Okay.
And you can buy tickets at the door still?
Limited.
Limited, and I don't know how many. We haven't decided how, how many we're going to have, because in the past, we haven't sold a lot of tickets at the door.
Okay.
But because the sales have been so sluggish, you know, we're offering them again, and hopefully people will buy into it.
Are you guys going to have some tickets at the Lions meeting tomorrow?
No.
Because I'm going to get a hold, because I'm sure my husband wants to go, and so I will mention that.
Some Denise.
Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, there you go.
Just want my store to send a letter and...
I'm making my way out. I like all the, uh, tickets, just can't just...
Yeah, because I'm sure Rodney would...
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll mention.
Thank you. I have a second. You know, this Pierogi Fest is a wonderful event that Diane's been on for about six years. It's really great, and I've been to Warsaw, and I've lived in Amtrak. This Polish food is authentic, real good Polish food.
Right from Polish village.
Uh, right from Polish village, that's in Amtrak. So I encourage everybody, support the community, go.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's a fun time.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Hopefully you can find someone else to release the tables this year, because that's not a fun job.
Well, we have to do BMC.
Ooh, I just know.
All right. We'll move on to City Managers' Report. Mrs. Kirstenberg?
Thank you, Mayor Gillis. Well, as you know, the Piece-to-Piece Quilters Lease Agreement is on the agenda today. The new plan to move in tomorrow. And, um, we have been working with other local groups that are interested in holding meetings and events at the center. So, so we do have quite a bit of interest, uh, for the Activity Center. The Smoke Testing Project was completed last week, and they are in process of analyzing the data. Um, the North Avenue Allen and Chestnut Road Rehabilitation Program has just been completed. They recently finished sealing the bridge, and now they just have a few final punch items to finish up. And, um, you know that we did get a grant to add a pathway around the perimeter of Lyons Park. The plans and specifications are about fifty percent complete. We still need to do some additional survey work and gather some additional information. So those plans will probably be done after Christmas, and bids would go up probably around February, March.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Kirstenberg? You know, we only have three more of these prepared, so, or actually just two. I'm going to need to keep track. All right. Move on to the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda consists of the regular City Council amendments from September sixteen, two thousand and twenty-five, underneath miscellaneous business. We have to approve a supplemental agreement to Algenack Number Eleven, the Wind Algenack Winter Mowing Contract for the wind period, September first, two thousand and twenty-five, to August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Can I have a motion, please?
I make the motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Support. Comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to, uh, we have no one finished business. We'll move on to new business. Item eleven A is to approve the annual Neptune three hundred and sixty meter reading software. Neptune three sixty software is used by, used to read the water meters throughout the city. The annual soft, soft fee, software fee is based on the number of water meters. The estimate currently is one thousand eight hundred and seventy meters. This one-year software contract is for September first, two thousand and twenty-five, through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve renewal of the Neptune three sixty meter reader software from Ferguson Waterworks, P.O.B.A.C. six four four zero five four Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, in the amount of three thousand six sixty-three thirty-eight cents for the period of September first, two thousand and twenty-five, through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Support. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Bemis.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Meldrum.
Yes.
Councilman Starbuck.
Yes.
Item eleven B is to approve water filtration plant drinking water laboratories recertification. Every three years, the State of Michigan requires certification of all water plant laboratories that analyze drinking water. Our current certification certification will expire on March first, two thousand and twenty-sixth. We have an invoice from the State Department of, State of Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, Lakes, and Energy. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Algenack Water Filtration Plant Drinking Water Laboratory Recertification for a three-year period from March first, two thousand and twenty-six through March first, two thousand and twenty-nine, to the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy Evo, whose being Lansing, Michigan, in the amount of three thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and eighteen cents.
Support. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Sorry, just to make mayor thing, I'm sorry. Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Meldrum.
Yes.
Councilman Starbuck.
Yes.
Councilman Bemis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item eleven C is to approve riverfront flag pole repair. The flag pole for the twenty-by-thirty-foot flag in Riverfront Park needs repair. Currently, the flag cannot be at full staff. The city currently has a contract with Rocket Enterprises, who is the only local provider of flag and flag pole services. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve flag pole repair from Rocket Enterprises, whose address is three zero six six zero Ryan Road, Warren, Michigan, in the amount of one thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents, and direct the City Manager to sign the contract on behalf of the City.
Support. Comments, questions, concerns? The only question I have is, Mrs. Kirstenberg, that money would come out of the trust fund, correct? For the resolution that we passed?
The, with the Milford Jackson Trust Fund?
Yes.
Oh, I thought that was, yeah, I didn't know that was the city's, because it's city's high poll, or this is just...
No, that, no, we, we voted that all, all flags on city property. It was part of the resolution. For those, Milford Jackson was a resident of Algenack. He left us a trust fund. Um, like, I think there's like five hundred thousand dollars in it. We get annual income of like twenty-six thousand, and because he was a member of the VFW, we passed a resolution to ensure that all the flags on city property were forever maintained for his, in his, with his trust fund. Can I have a motion, please? Or can I, yes, can I have a motion, please? No, we already had a motion. Can I have a roll call? I'm sorry, I'm not doing good tonight.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yeah, I'm joking. Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Meldrum.
Yes.
Councilman Starbuck.
Yes.
Councilman Bemis.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Seeing here, I was going to behave, and everything, but you made it really harder to write.
I think earlier I wasn't feeling good enough. Item eleven D is to approve the Bemis Swimming Pool Pay Application Number Nine. No?
Hey, you're on a roll tonight, are you?
Pay Application Number Nine for the Algenack Pool Project.
There you go.
Architect George Hart reviewed the application for accuracy and accounting construction completion percentages. The application covers the billing period of July first, two thousand and twenty-five, to August thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. City Council awarded this project in August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four to a little bit of Robert Clancy Construction, the amount of two million, two nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and one dollars. The city was successful in receiving a Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund grant in the amount of three hundred thousand, an MEDC grant, revitalization station placement grant in the amount of four hundred thousand, and one million dollars from State Senator Kevin Rattell in the budget. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the Algenack Swimming Pool Project Pay Application Number Nine to Robert Clancy Contracting in the amount of four hundred and four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-four cents.
Support. Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Meldrum.
Yes.
Councilman Starbuck.
Yes.
Councilman Bemis.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item eleven E is to approve payment to Park and Pool for swimming deck pool furniture. At the meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, City Council approved awarding the contract for pool deck furniture to Park and Pool in the amount of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. The Algenack Lions Club has donated thirteen thousand dollars for the pool furniture on September second, two thousand and twenty-five. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve payment of the Algenack Swimming Pool Deck Furniture in the amount of thirty-four thousand, nine eighty-five, ninety-two cents to Park and Pool, whose address is Thirty Crossing Lane in Lexington, Virginia.
Support. Comments, questions, concerns?
Yippee.
What day is the quote going up next year?
I think you're going to have to ask for replacement.
Between, see, they put...
Hearing, hearing none? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Meldrum.
Yes.
Councilman Starbuck.
Yes.
Councilman Bemis.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item eleven F is to approve replacement of sanitary sewer lift station float. The city is, the city has numerous float switches and sanitary lift stations in the city, like at Delta, Interlaken, and Lock Haven. Float switches are electrical sensors that are used to detect liquid levels and control other components such as pumps, valves, or alarms. We have an invoice from Jet Pump and Valve in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars, eighty-four cents. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve purchase of two sanitary lift station float switches from Jet Pump and Valve, Waterford, Michigan, in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
All right. Comments, questions, concerns?
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, these are very important. I have a little experience in this, switches, um, float switches and water towers, things like that in the plastics industry. I'm just curious, are these backups or these replacements? Would it be prudent to have another one in stock, or do we already have that?
Mrs. Kirstenberg?
Thank you, Mayor Gillis. Um, Councilman Carter, this is what was recommended by our DPW foreman in his own place. And the pricing, I would say, has gone up significantly since that's called.
Then do I just wonder when you, in the container?
I, I've been envisioning Corey.
Yeah, me too.
Right now.
Anyone else? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Meldrum.
Yes.
Councilman Starbuck.
Yes.
Councilman Bemis.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Item eleven G is to approve proposed recruitment and selection process for a new City Manager. The selection of the City Manager is a critical decision for the future of a community. To ensure organizational input, public transparency, and smooth transition, it is suggested that the process be conducted as follows with an estimated timeline noted at the level. Number one, initiate, initial review of applicants. City Clerk will review submitted applications, resumes, and cover letters, and other media materials to weed out unqualified applicants, i.e. that did not submit a resume, do not have a bachelor's degree, or fail to provide references. Number two, candidate selection. Mayor, Mayor Protown, City Clerk, Fire Chief, and City Treasurer will vet all qualified candidates and determine candidates to be interviewed. Number three, preliminary interviews via, conducted by the Mayor, Mayor Protown, City Clerk, Fire Chief, and Treasurer. A City Manager interview matrix we use to select potential candidates. This matrix tracks a structured tool that uses a scoring system based on predefined criteria and relevant questions to ensure a standardized evaluation process for all applicants. Number four, background and reference checks. Number five, public interviews by the council, interview matrix we use to select finalists. Number six, public interviews by council, round two if needed for the top finalists to allow more in-depth, in-depth discussions and interactions. Number seven, closed session to discuss candidate selection. The city council, council makes the final decision on the candidate who demonstrates the best credentials, leadership qualities and commitments to serving the city of Algonac. Number eight, contract negotiations. Direct city attorney to develop contract, select candidate. Number nine, closed session to discuss contract. Number ten, appointment of new city manager. Number eleven, employment contract presented to council for approval. The dates are November fifth, the applications will be due. Ten, November tenth through eleventh, candidate selection. November seventeenth through twentieth, preliminary, preliminary interviews via Zoom. November twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth, background and reference checks. December ninth, public interviews by city council. December ninth, closed session to discuss candidate selection. December sixteenth, appointment of new city manager. January sixth, employment agreement presented to council for approval. Can I have a motion please?
Motion to approve proposed recruitment and selection process for a new city manager.
Comments, questions, concerns?
Other mayor, okay, go ahead.
Other question on the process number three. Oh Mary, um, interviews via Zoom. Is that common in practice here? I mean, is this something new the city's trying out? And if you can explain. I'm sure for me and for the audience, Matrix. How does, um, is this like a?
Doing the preliminary meetings during Zoom would mean you could select from a wider pool of candidates that do not have, wouldn't have to travel if, if need be. Or if had another commitment. You know, they wouldn't have to. If they have another job, because you're looking at professionals, they could take an hour off their day instead of a four-hour block to come down here. You know, I, I, I believe that was thought process put into that. Am I correct on that, Mrs. Gerstberg?
Yes, Mayor.
So I have a question, so public interviews, oops. Where am I, I'm sorry. Public interviews by city council if, round two if needed for the top finalists. So, there would be more than a couple people, like there wouldn't be just selected one person. And then we decide.
No.
And so round two, it says right here, round two if needed.
Well, if needed means, let's say we go through, let's say we have ten applicants and only, if, if we get to round one and only one person. Makes, makes, we all agree that that's the one person. Council would still be the one deciding whether or not we're gonna have a second round of interviews. It's just to give, it's the kind of just to give, this is just a basic. It could, it could be quicker than this or longer than this, but this is just to kind of keep us on a, on track. And then we didn't answer Wendy's question about the matrix. Matrix is a, is a scoring system where each person gets the same interview questions and you score them. And rather than each person gives a score. We, that's how you kind of, kind of gives you a baseline for what you should be looking for.
Okay.
Is that, and I know Lisa, is that, is that correct on what I'm? Because you've been in many of these. And Mr. Bembas, you've been in.
Oh, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Touch on it, yeah, yeah. Um. Um. If I'm not mistaken, um, we are not going to be hiring an executive search team because of the cost. Let's, I believe is somewhere upwards, if not of twenty-five grand, I believe. To hire an executive search team. And. Mr. Bembas was a member of council when this went on before. And if I'm not mistaken, when I was reading through, um, the minutes from them. Um, at one point, I think at the beginning. Um, you guys were looking at doing a search through the Michigan.
We went through the M M L.
Right, and then you guys didn't go through that. Use them strictly through the end, I mean, because again, you guys had discussed cost and it was what, fourteen grand back then?
You know, I don't remember, but you, I'm sure you're right, because you're a very detailed person, absolutely.
So, um, we won't be, um, using an executive search for, to do this.
It's not necessary.
It, it's, yeah, it, it isn't necessary. We will be putting the post, it's gonna be posted, um, with the M M L. Um, and again, um. There's a link to the agenda package. On the city's website. And if anyone is curious, um, what we are looking for. Um, what the language is in the job posting. It's in the agenda package. Just wanna throw that out there. Um, and that's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, my question is, uh, when you guys do the interview process through Zoom, can we get that recorded for the rest of council? So if we wanna look back and see how they performed during these Zoom meetings, we can see the mannerisms, see how they answered certain questions? I mean, I know it couldn't get out to the public, but.
It depends on if everybody Zooms, not everybody's gonna Zoom.
There's a confidentiality thing.
That would not be quite right to see just the ones who Zoomed and not the ones who didn't.
Well, I, I mean both, I can record and you and.
Confidentiality, I know in these types of searches is a major thing too, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so that could be tricky.
I've had a couple, a couple of times where I've interviewed people in my career. You don't really wanna see what the initial committee interviewed because, um. You want them to whittle down, so if you're seeing all of that. Then it gives you opportunity to second guess, you wanna give the original committee the carte blanche to make that decision about. Them having in the back of their mind, council will review everything. That I saw and make judgments on me. So you gotta give them that independence that they're doing the initial round of the survey. As far as Zoom, everybody does Zoom. Because now you have the chance to get in somebody from California or Hawaii. I mean, I did interviews when I was. When I interviewed and hired a post mentor for Mount Clemens. I actually interviewed a person from Guam. The post office was not gonna fly him out from Guam. Uh, we did hire somebody from Florida, but it's all Zoom is, is the way we do. The matrix is set up so that they add, ask the exact same questions to each person. And then usually grade them on a scale. Most of the time it's one to three, one to five. And they figure out there for the finalists. Um, my, my thing is, I would hope. Having a college education is very important. It, it should not be. Sporifying based on the work, if the work experience can equal a degree. So if they had forty-one years of management and they don't have a college degree, I would ask the city to take that into account. But at the same time, if their degree is in. Basket weaving or some, you know, religious studies. That, that might not be what we're looking for compared to somebody with forty years' experience and no degree. So I would ask the committee to keep that in mind.
Okay, so that when if, um, Mayor Protown and the mayor do Zooms. And pick candidates from those Zooms for us to consider for the city manager's position. Those gonna be recorded so that the rest of us can see.
They, they can't, and confidentiality is a major thing in this process.
Because in the first round, you're gonna find people that currently have a, have a job. That they don't want people to know that they're looking. So you, you know, that's why it's kind of.
On the preliminary one where you have the mayor, Mayor Protown, city clerk, fire chief and city treasurer. Right, you don't want that recorded for us to see because. It takes away their amount of independence to make those decisions that we've given them. When, when I hire a supervisor or a post mentor, I have a committee that weeds down. Like my supervisor, I had eighty-one people apply for the supervisor job. They whittled it down to five. There was no need for me to look at the other seventy-six, I just wanted the five. Because if they know I'm looking over their shoulder, they're worried about, well, what, what will Bembas think about this? Well, will Bembas be mad at me if I didn't pick that person? Give them that independence and that way they're, um. It keeps us out of that loop of second guessing them. And makes it a lot easier and comfortable for them. Now, as far as the two interviews, what they're saying is we interview five people or three or whatever we decide. So now we're like, oh, there's two that we really love. Then we interview again those two again, and that's what they're saying by second interview. Okay? Um, and maybe the first time, oh yeah, that's the person, we're gonna take them, no question of that, but we don't need the second one. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, um, I don't know, so. All the interviews will be Zoom. What if we can't Zoom, how are we gonna con- conduct that one?
Imagine we can do it over the phone if they have to or in person?
Yeah, if they don't.
Always want them to do it in person.
Oh, definitely.
And I know that, um, Mayor Protown Davy. Maybe it's not really in favor of an executive search, what if we don't? When it comes down to candidates, what if we don't have really what qualified or what is fitting the current description that we're looking at? So what, then what are, what is gonna be our options?
I think any things are definitely, that's when we reevaluate.
Okay.
I think our goal right now is to push through, you know, if we.
Get this going.
Because we don't have an, you know.
You can throw out the entire package, throw all over it, say, well, you know, I'm sure they did it differently. And, and then we do consider to rehire a company. Nothing keeps us from going in a different direction, but. We went about a year without a city manager. And we had Joe Don in the background at the time in the back. He said, an office is always good, it's how it runs when the boss isn't there. Now, we have excellent employees who can hold down this fort. So if we don't, you know, this is not done right away. These people running this office, they run it and we'll get through it and it's not that big of a deal. So if we do interview, not one fits, okay, let's move on.
Yeah, we got.
Throw it out, do it again.
Yeah, because it took a while.
No, we're not gonna rush them.
Right.
Everything's on the table, but we're, the whole, this goal of yours to get through is hopefully we can get it on this timeline. But if we don't get it, it's all fluid.
Okay, and this is one more, I just wanna thank the city manager for putting together such a structured, detailed job description.
Yes.
I believe that's, I mean, from what, what it was to what it is, it's incredible, thank you. I mean, that's a great interest for the city, so I really truly appreciate that.
Have we put this on M M L?
Yep.
No, we have to.
But then after we.
It could go on there tomorrow. All right. I think a little bit.
It'll go tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Can I have a roll call please?
Councilman Starbuck.
Yes.
Councilman Bembas.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Meldrum.
Yes.
Motion here.
All right, I just want to, this is more to the fun. To approve the twenty, twenty-five Halloween trick-or-treat hours and road closures. Each year, the city council designates specific times for trick-or-treating. These times are set prior to, October thirty-first, traditionally five to seven. Halloween festivities at Smith's Recreation Park this year will also include the annual fire department, bonfire starting at seven P M. The trunk retreat from five to seven, cars can start lining up at four thirty. Algonac Rotary Club will be supplying free hot dogs and water and the city of Algonac staff members will be doing hot dog cooking and wrapping. For the fourth year in the row for the particip- safety of the participants, the city will be closing Clay and Smith from Washington to Michigan. And Michigan from Clay to Smith from five to ten P M. The safety and security plan is attached. And I have a motion please.
Make the motion to approve trick-or-treating hours between five and seven P M. And street closures from Clay and Smith from Washington to Michigan. And Michigan from Clay and Smith from five to ten P M on Friday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Support. Comments, questions, concerns? Well, not my, this is your holidays.
You, you know it, I'm, I'm, well. No, no, no.
I, I love the way we do this, um, it's, I found out at my house where we were only getting five kids a year. And with the churches being there and it's a very safe environment for all our kids, I, and then it ends right at the bonfire, so it's just beautiful. It's a, it's just an awesome tradition that we've had this down. People, I think they said sixty-some odd years they've been having the bonfire, I don't think anybody really knows. They used to put Chris Grab quotes on top.
Who I just got to picture that.
So I think it's just an awesome tradition that we keep going.
That's true.
And that's true. And then, actually, if I'm not mistaken, at one time we, uh, Mr. Bryson would know, didn't we used to burn Marine City jerseys on top?
I think so, yeah.
I don't think we do that anymore, but I believe.
Wow.
Might be because they're in a different division than us, but yeah.
I would make them into quilts.
All right, any other discussion on Halloween? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have Halloween. Item eleven, aye. Is to approve the activity center lease agreement with Piece-to-Piece Filters. We have the lease agreement between, out of the city of Algonac, Piece-to-Piece Filters, they'll be leasing space in the Algonac Activity Center. The space to be leased was once, was once the library in the elementary school. Piece-to-Piece Filters is certified five oh one C three charitable organization committed to promoting the crafts of arts, quilts, quilt making. Sewing and fiber arts passing along the fish to members and to the wider community. Leases for one year and will be for a hundred and fifty a month. Piece-to-Piece has many activities planned including quilt retreats, day and evening sewing classes and meetings of the San Clara County Quilt Trail Group. Can I have a motion please?
Make the motion to approve the Algonac Activity Center Lease Agreement. Between the city of Algonac and Piece-to-Piece Filters. For a term beginning October first, twenty twenty-five. And ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. I direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support. Comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm, I'm definitely not gonna say no to a bunch of women with needles in their hands.
And scissors.
Again, a picture of that. Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I. Having the, the work that you guys have put into this. I honestly and truly hope that the rest of this community will see. This is a good thing. To have all of you, these first ones in. And, you know, I, I listened to Jan one day tell me about everything that they had done. And like she said earlier, um, God will provide. I listened to all of the things that she was telling me and all the work that they had done and I was tired. And the, it's. You guys have opened, for me, you guys have opened up the door. To let people see that this is a good thing that we are trying to do. And thank you for everything that you guys did. You guys are awesome.
You know, it, it was a while ago when, uh, we had a meeting here and I remember Pastor, uh. The pastor was here, John Highstreet, and we were here and a whole bunch of people were here. What are we gonna do with the school? I think that was like four, five years ago.
No.
How long ago was that?
What, it was like, what, a year?
No, it wasn't more than that.
No. Oh.
But it's, uh, we finally reached that goal. And through a lot of prayer, perseverance. And, and work, we are finally seeing the fruits of everyone's labor. And it's just wonderful and I'm glad you guys are the first to be in there and, uh, just looking forward to it.
I just gotta tell you, I seen it the other day from the windows, it looked beautiful. You guys have done a very good job, especially from that nasty carpet. I'm excited for you guys and I hope you guys have lots of good memories.
One more thing. I think that we are the ones that need to say thank you to you. Don't thank us, thank you guys for everything, for everything that you've done for the community, but what you're doing for the city with us. So thank you.
When you, when we bought, when we bought the building and we became, you know, in control, I think this is kind of the vision, the, this is what we thought. This, it's a place for the whole community. You know, we've got the sewers and, we got the sewers, we got the gym for other activities. It's gonna be a place that the whole community come together. We can get off social media and see each other face to face where it's a lot, you know, it's a lot nicer to see everybody face to face. And now all winter long, we're gonna have a place to come together as a community. I see us doing concerts in the gym over the winter, like we do music in the park in the summer. You know, just to, I see so many different things that we can do and we have, we now have a place to do it. And when you think about the investment. For seven years, we sat there with a vacant ice floor and now tomorrow, there's gonna be a whole new set of lights in there, it's gonna be purple. And, you know, if you think about ladies that you want in your activity center, making sure nobody's getting in the mischief. I think you guys are the ones we want there. So thank you. Can I get, anybody else? Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilman Bembas?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davey?
Yes.
Mayor Gillis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Maldrum?
Yes.
Councilman Skarback?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Item eleven J is to introduce amendment to chapter forty-four utilities by adding article four Stormwater Management. To help keep our waterway, watersway clean, equal requires that the City of Algenack operate under a municipal security storm sewer system permit and M S four permit, much easier to say. The permit requires the city take steps to reduce pollution, prevent illegal dumping and, and, and keep our storm water system working properly. The M S four permit requires that the City of Algenack implement a detailed storm water management ordinance. The city attorney has drafted the attached ordinance with input from staff. These new rules will keep our community safe from flooding and to protect the St. Clair River and surrounding waterways from pollution. What does this ordinance do? It requires new construction and certain property changes to follow storm water design standards. Prohibits illegal discharges from entering storm drains. Ensures the storm water systems are properly maintained so they continue working long-term. Gives the city the right to inspect systems and act if there's a risk to health, safety or the environment. What's this mean for residents and business? Everyday wa- activities like watering and washing vehicles home are okay as long as normal pollutants are discharged. Developers and contractors must have followed storm water rules when building or renovating. Property owners must maintain their storm water systems, collect drains, retention ponds or swales. The city may issue warnings, require cleanup or fine violators up to, violators up to five hundred dollars today. The goal is compliance and prevention, not punishment. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to introduce amendment to chapter forty-four utilities by adding article four Stormwater Management.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, actually kinda like this, that it's all written up this way because I have a big drain in my ditch. So I'm gonna print this and when I tell my sixteen-year-old to go out and clear out that drain, I'll get shown it.
Say, oh, there's a shortage, you better.
I, I just like the fact that it, like, just being in an area with high, with high flo- high flooding probability sometimes. It kind of, you know, I know I live in a, I live in a flood plain and I like the fact that people have to direct their water the right, right direction. Anyone else? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davey?
Yes.
Mayor Gillis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Maldrum?
Yes.
Councilman Skarback?
Yes.
Councilman Bembas?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item eleven K is to introduce amendment to chapter thirty-two Solid Waste, Article One in general. Section one, polluting public spaces, subsection A, to change the violations of the ordinance from municipal civil infraction to misdemeanors by adding subsection C. The staff request that city attorney draft the attached ordinance because of situations that occurred recently within the community. This amendment updates the current city ordinance on littering and dumping. It is illegal to litter or dump trash debris or other waste on city streets, sidewalks, alleys or public places. Commercial or industrial waste may not be discharged into the street, sidewalks, alleys or gutters at any time. Violations are now considered misdemeanors rather than civil infractions. This change strengthens enforcement and emphasizes how seriously the city takes for protecting our community. This update is meant to keep Algenack clean, safe and enjoyable. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to introduce amendment to chapter thirty-two Solid Waste, Article One in general. Section one, polluting public spaces, subsection A, to change violations of the ordinance from municipal civil infractions to misdemeanors by adding subsection three, per C.
Second, comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Proton Davey?
Yes.
Mayor Gillis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Maldrum?
Yes.
Councilman Skarback?
Yes.
Councilman Bembas?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item twelve, accounts payable.
I make a motion to approve accounts payable and payroll in the amount of two million, five hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-three cents.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns? Just so everyone knows, we're not just randomly paying money. That is our, that is our, that is our tax money that goes to the county.
I was really hoping you were gonna go there.
After the August tax bills, we have to send most of that money to the county, so that's what all that is. So, um, anyone else? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Gillis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Maldrum?
Yes.
Councilman Skarback?
Yes.
Councilman Bembas?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davey?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item next to Genet, Mrs. Kirstenberg?
Thank you, Mayor Gillis. We will have the appointment of a similar representative, the wastewater or the water plant air compressor maintenance contract, a proposal for landscaping maintenance at the library and the water plant exchanger project phase two. Oh, and adoption of the storm water maintenance ordinance that you just introduced and adoption of the polluting public places ordinance that you also just introduced.
Well, that sounds like a great idea.
That's a fun plan.
Looking forward to it. All right. Council comments, Councilman Bembas?
Um, well, they just left, but I wanted to thank Pat and Dwayne for their positive comments. Um, the city is moving in a lot of good directions and I'm glad you guys are part of it. Um, you guys need to take a whole bunch of pictures and post them on Facebook and all that. But, but thank you. Um, I've always appreciated Jan Evans. She has always been, since I met her about ten years ago, a very dedicated hard worker who's always had the best in Algenack. So, congratulations, guys. Dwayne and Pat, common sense, appreciate it. October ninth, five thirty, doors open, get some good Polish food. It is always fun. It is always a blast. There are Polish dancers doing the pull cut. Um, the ci- ci- you got me at city chicken. Um, so come and have a good time. I will go like this. You can sit home and cook and have the same old thing or have somebody else cook and go out. Um, that's a no-brainer to me. Sure, sure, that's, uh, that's our cuisine. So, uh, come and have a good time with us on Thursday.
Councilman Carter?
Hi, ma'am. It's great to see all the ladies and every, all the, everybody coming to the meeting tonight. I appreciate the positive comments as well and congratulations and we look forward to seeing the skies of women with the, the Piece-to-Piece Quilters. It's exciting. Um, and I second this Thursday. I've been to every, the, the Polish dinner and they're amazing. So be sure and come out.
Mayor Proton Davey?
Um, first, before I forget, 'cause I almost did, um, the library is having, uh, their book sale um, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Um, Wednesday, Thursday from nine to eight and Friday from nine to five. Um, if you get a chance, pop in there because not only you can find some good books, um, the friends of the library, they use that money to, for really good things. And Debbie, Debbie Scrugg said the thing today, Dawn, can you please do this? Yes, in a heartbeat, I will do that. Um, tonight was kinda cool. We got to like hear some, you know, like good stuff from, you know, we don't have to, you know, kinda worry about who's gonna throw this or that. Thank you. It, it's good every once in a while to hear that. And thank you, Jan, for saying. I fully believe with the things that I've said, with the things that we're doing now. First of all, it's, most has been done in this city in a long time. And it can bring families in here. This could be the place where people want to raise their kids. Between the pool, the activity center, the events that we have going on, that we didn't have going on before. Things are goo- things are good are going to happen. And all of you ladies play a big part in that. And like I said, we, we need to thank you. Don't thank us. We thank you for helping us get there. Really appreciate it. And I'm probably gonna say one more thing, but I think that's it.
Okay. Councilwoman Harris?
I want to thank everybody for coming. Congratulations. And it was very nice to hear from Jan Evans and the Piece-to-Piece Quilters, the positive things from Dwayne and Pat also. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Councilwoman Maldrum?
I want to say congratulations to the Piece Quilters. Look forward to seeing some of your work you're doing very well. Um, I want to thank Jake for a great event that we pulled through, great farm, Country Fest. It was really a lot of fun. Uh, and then thank everyone for coming out tonight.
Councilman Skarback?
Uh, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight as well. I also wanna thank you all for doing as much work as you possibly have done so far at school. I know it's a tremendous amount of work to get where you have gotten so far. I wish you guys the best of luck and let us know when you have events, 'cause I'm sure we'll all be there to support you guys. Also, I do wanna address one thing. So that banner, that's a hundred twenty-nine, a hundred, a hundred and ten percent, I did put that up. We got skids season, we got scissors lift. We came in after working hours. There was no money to the city. There was no resources used from the city. Steve, yes, he is my dad. That, my dad might not be on the organizational paperwork, but he has busted his ass at that field when I need him. He's out there helping this community every time. I will not apologize for putting that banner up. But what I will do is I did go about the wrong way. I did not get a M dot permit. So yes, was I wrong for that? One hundred and ten percent, I went about the wrong way. Was I ignorant when I came to the facts that I needed that? Yes, I was. However, moving forward, all I can do is apologize and deal with the conse- consequences that come with it. But I will not apologize for putting that banner up for that. Thank you guys for coming. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Red Lion Country Fest. It was a blast. Six times on the bowl. Who wants this guy? I did it. I did, I, I could, if I walked.
Is this video?
Oh, yes.
I was just gonna say, I got a picture in my head.
If I walked to the porta jocks, "Mayor, get on the bowl again." Okay, well, you know, I'm not one to let people. So.
They did that for their organization.
Well, you got three hundred pounds going this way, that way, this way. It is crazy. Um, Probie Fest, also a great time. Please just try to make it. We had a great meeting with Algenack Live today. Um, we discussed Probie Fest and our next one is Halloween in the Neck. Um, and when, new this year for Halloween in the Neck, we're gonna put a costume swap table. So anybody who wants to donate some costumes, you can throw them on the table. Anybody wants to come take costumes, you can come take them. It's, there's no reason for, for people to spend money on these things that we only use once a year. And my closet is probably full of little kids' ones, 'cause I've had to buy probably ten different ones, because as you know children to say.
I gotta tell him, her, she did so, like, incredibly crazy about this, so.
So I think it's gonna be fun to have the costume swap table.
Yeah, that's cool.
Um, speaking of events, Ms. Rumble, I believe you have an event, correct?
Yes, we have, um, Rob Stewart and Elton John coming to, uh, Lions Club. Um, this coming Saturday, we still have a few tickets left.
Awesome.
And they are awesome entertainers.
Tell us what it, tell, tell us what it's about. Why, why are you doing it?
Oh, thank you. Yeah. I am the chair of the Our Lady on the River Against Human and Sex Trafficking Ministry. We've been in, uh, Algenack for seven years. And we, um, we have, we're under the Alliance to End Human Trafficking, so all of our money that we make goes to the Alliance. They started out as the United States Catholic Sisters Against Human Trafficking and then they changed their name because they wanna be all inclusive, just to let you know, it doesn't have, you don't have to be Catholic. This is for, this, this is for everybody. And a lot of people have told us they never knew that there was trafficking going on in Algenack or St. Clair County. And I think, uh, we have opened up their eyes. I've been to the schools a couple of times and did some presentations there. And, um, I don't, it's, it took a long time for us to really become a part of the community. And I think we're on our way now. I think that people have recognized us and, um, thank Denise for getting us rolling. And, um, if you come to this and you leave without having a good time, it's your own fault. These guys are great. We're not having dinner this time because it's getting, uh, kind of unaffordable to have dinner. So we are having tacos and melted cheese and salsa and, uh, theater popcorn. So, uh, and it's a cash bar, so we can have a lot of fun. You get to dance on the side wherever there's room left.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
We do have a couple of, uh, we have two, uh, board openings on planning and two on libraries. So if anybody knows anybody, please let me know. And congratulations to Piece-to-Piece Quilters. We're looking forward to this wonderful facility. I know how crazy quilters are. My aunt literally got her house built around her long arm. So, yes, so the house is built around it. We have two bedrooms. There's a wall missing, so she lives right next door to me. So I know exactly how quilting is and I know everything about back quarters and, you know, I could rock quilting all day. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
I just wanna thank the Piece Quilters for the stone. This is a beautiful reminder for us, really, of, we're trying to start and it started with you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'll make a motion for adjourn at seven oh five.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.